So the numbering same.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Shall be good.
Thanks.
I just want to clarify that since there we have a large audience and I don't want any misunderstandings. We did redact some of the email addresses. As we have in the as we have in the past. There were some people from social media getting into the packets and sending people who wrote letters. Erroneous correspondence that appeared to be from the city, but. So. It's nothing more than that, just. Making it making people's personal email addresses not visible.
Mayor, I am present. I'm just dark while I try to rush through this last bite of dinner.
The same with me. I'm finishing up my dinner, so I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Of the regular talent. Of the regular talent city council meeting of August third at six forty six roll call, please.
Council of Clark.
Here.
Council of Penamrose.
Here.
Council of Greider.
Here.
Councilor Pestizo.
Here.
Councilor Byers.
Here.
Councilor Para Miller.
Here.
Mayor Ayers Flood.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Hector. And I I just also want to clarify one point. What I just said about the emails being redacted and. And that somebody was coming off social media and appearing to represent them as the city. That's the complaint I heard. That's so I'm just relaying the complaint. All right, with that. The next item on the agenda is meeting accessibility. Hector?
This is a question for the public. If anybody would like this meeting translated into Spanish, would like them to raise their hand now. Yes, this is una pregunta para el público. Si alguien necesita estar ahí, no interpretado en español, por favor, hace su mano ahí. Now watch the attendees, Mayor.
Thank you, Hector. The next item on the agenda is additions or corrections to the agenda. Does anybody have any additions or corrections for the agenda? All right, seeing none. Number item item number four is community announcements. Staff, do you have any community announcements?
I have one announcement before we let Hector take the stand. I would like to give a big shout out to Hector Flores. He spent today that he actually set up a viewing room at our community center so that folks who weren't able to connect to the internet. Could still attend and could give input if they wanted to. So Hector, thank you for making that work and I is. Put my head in there. We have about six folks who were able to attend that way.
That's amazing. Council Penamrose.
Thanks so much. So this is a question and also a request if it's possible. I think one of the the good things that we have had in in meetings past where they were entirely in person. Is especially when members of the community step up and and speak to us, it was more of a face to face communication. So I'm I'm hoping that it would be possible and for folks who are testifying today on Zoom. To allow them to turn on their video cameras. So we can have that face to face. As well as in the community room, if that's technologically possible, I think it would it would help communication.
I'll have to leave that one to Hector to see if it's technologically possible.
Just to follow up, I think if someone's promoted to a panelist, they should be able to both unmute themselves and hopefully. Be able to turn on their video, although I don't know that's the case.
Okay, and if we could get community announcements from Hector, do you have any?
Madam Mayor, I do not have any community announcements at this moment.
Thank you, Hector. Any community announcements from council? All right, seeing none, let's move on to then speakers heard on non agenda items. Do we have any? Speaker request forms for speakers heard on non agenda items?
Madam Mayor, I have two Debbie Rappaport and Betsy Harshman, but I. I'm not sure if they would like to speak on a non agenda item or an agenda item, so we would like that clarification from them.
Okay, I'll let you go ahead and handle that clarification.
Betsy Harshman is able to speak.
Betsy, are you here to speak on non agenda item or did you?
Yes. I think it's a non agenda item. It's just my feelings on on the Tura plan.
That would be an agenda item, so.
Okay.
That's coming up a little bit later and we'll be sure to call you. We'll move your name to that staff and call you at that time.
Okay.
All right, Debbie Rappaport.
Mayor, I don't see Debbie Rappaport in the audience unless it's one of the phone numbers.
I do see Debbie R and that's usually how she's in.
Okay, pardon me.
That's all right. All right, well, it doesn't look like. So does she does she have to do something to elevate? Or to move over to the?
Yes, I'm here and and I guess I am an agenda item, just so you know.
Very good.
Thank you.
We'll call you at that time. Great. All right. So if there's no other speaker request forms, if there's anybody in the audience that wishes to speak. On a non agenda item. You can raise your hand and we'll we'll go ahead and recognize you at this time. All right, thank you. So the next item on the agenda is city reports. Staff report?
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and share screen here very quick. All right, is the PowerPoint up for you all? All right, so prayer. The lonely staff report today is going to be. Just want to hit on a few of the main highlights in that. Tomorrow is officially my one year anniversary, so I will be giving my annual review process. So city councils expect a survey in your email inbox. To start just collecting some feedback on how I'm doing and how I can do better. Some other great news is that we received an additional $120,000 in our municipal wildfire assistance funding. This is specific for two items. One is a hazard mitigation coordinator. Who will start working on kind of our hazard mitigation projects and overseeing that work. And two is to get HR support and helping. Recruit and hire all the different positions that we have grant funded right now. This is FYI is our audit is still in process. Hope to have it wrapped up the middle of August, end of August. We are seeing uptick in waste cleanups around town. We think it may be a blip, and so we'll keep an eye on it, just that we wanted to make sure council was aware of. And then, as most folks know, ODFF, the Oregon Department of Forestry has released their wildfire reading notices. Folks do have until September fifteenth to appeal that notice if they are a property owner. And I wanted to let council know that there is the opportunity for the city council to appeal the ODF. On the entire community's behalf. But what that does is it gives every single person within our jurisdictions the exact same rating. And I will say talent is is higher on the rating scale, and so that would likely just push everyone's reading potentially upwards. So I just wanted to make sure that those were all in your minds.
Council Penamrose.
Yeah, just a question. I know that some people are concerned that a wire wildfire rating will affect their insurance. But I it's my understanding, and I haven't researched this in depth, but that this information was already available to insurance companies. So none of it would be a surprise to them. I don't know if. You know, there are other concerns about having a rating or not having a rating, and I'm just wondering if if staff knew anything more about that.
Yeah, I was able to talk to the state forester and they supplied me with a whole bunch of really great handouts. So if any community member is concerned or curious. About their reading or how it could impact them, both in terms of insurance or what they might have to do to their land. We have those at City Hall, so come on by. Their insurance handout, what they say is that the information that they use to make the wildfire risk map, the insurance industry has already been using for years. And so the big difference is is this map puts it out publicly now so that everyone has access to it. They don't expect it to increase homeowners insurance. Was there the summary of that handout?
Thanks, Jordan. That's very helpful.
Are there any other comments or questions? Council Byers?
Thank you. I noticed in connection with the fiscal year twenty one audit that's still in process. There was a deadline for an August nineteenth draft of financial statements, and I'm wondering if. The city staff is feeling confident in being able to have just a draft version of the financials by that date.
We will, we will, pardon me. So typically, you know, those draft financial statements are actually prepared by the auditor. And so since our our audit is taking much longer this year, specifically because we had so many federal grant funds coming in, we had to go through some additional scrutiny and steps. So they will get a draft to us by August fifteenth latest. If not, Tessa and I are also working on creating our own draft financial statements in the event that we do need to turn that in by the nineteenth. And just to clarify for council, so the city has a bond rating and that, you know, influences what the interest rates we get when we go out for bonds. So every single year, we submit our financial statements to that rating agency. As just part of our annual financial maintenance. And so that is what that August nineteenth deadline is for, is to submit that statement to the rating agency.
Well, thank you. Generating those reports is painstaking and so detail oriented. So thank you.
Grateful Tess is on the team to make it happen.
Thank you so much.
Are there any other comments on the staff report? Jordan, I did want to just mention that I know that in our meeting, we talked the other day about some of the waste cleanups. And some of the drug paraphernalia and and even perhaps biohazards that are associated with them. And one of the suggestions that I I just want to ask if we have an opportunity to look further into is the idea of outsourcing. Those. Those projects just, you know, by just for if for no other reason. That it's probably a specialized type of cleanup and especially when it comes to like needles and that sort of thing, if that's. Part of the part of the challenge and so have you had a chance to to look into that at all?
You know, the Public Works Director, I did briefly discuss it. I think we are looking to go out to get some cost estimates. Of what it costs for that and then would, you know, if it's not within budget, come back to the board. To the council and see if we would like to allocate funds towards it, but I really appreciated that idea and. And agree, it's definitely a. Important thing to have the safety precautions in place while you're doing it.
I know that, you know, especially with. Yeah, especially with like needles and stuff like that. You just want to make sure that trained individuals are handling those those kinds of things. And I know that there has been. Some of that in every city, so I would hope that we would take kind of the extra precautions. For the safety of the staff. All right, so are there any other questions or comments on the staff report? Right, so the next item on the agenda is item number seven is the consent calendar and. Item seven point one is a noise permit for the grotto staff report.
Yes, this was actually a noise permit for an event that actually occurred last week. Paperwork just came in late, so we're just looking for some retroactive approval from the council.
I also want to mention that as part of the grant process that. That some of the businesses are are accessing for events and so on. We with my T Talent Business Alliance hat on for just a moment, we are. Taking that opportunity to talk about the needed city permits and things like that when they have those events and. So I really feel like this is just another opportunity to really help. Event promoters, local businesses and nonprofits, you know, take all of the the needed steps. To hold their event, so I was glad to see this come in. All right, so if there's no questions or comments, I would certainly entertain a motion. Council Byers?
I moved to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Council of Clark.
Yeah.
Council of Penamrose.
Yes.
Council of Greider.
Think we lost audio after.
Yeah.
Council of Pestizo.
Yes.
Councilor Byers.
Yes.
Councilor Para Miller.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Hector. The next item on the agenda is item number eight, unfinished business eight point one, discussion on drafting an application for TA. TA dash ROW UGB amendment staff report?
Great, thank you. This is a quick reminder, especially since I know we have a lot of new folks in the audience. In here in town, we have the talent city limits, and then we also have the talent urban growth boundary, which is where we expect to expand over twenty years. And then we also have urban reserve areas, which are areas that have been earmarked that we expect city to bring within the urban growth boundary and then eventually within the city. For specific purposes, and those urban reserve areas were identified to a very long regional planning process. And so two urban reserve areas, and I'm hoping you can see my mouse. TA one, which is the school district, sports field and bus barn. Is one of those urban reserve areas and then TA row. Which is a right of way that was designed to help connect the middle schools that sorry, the middle school and elementary school to that school district property. Last month, city council or two months ago, because time flies. The city council adopted consensual plans for those two properties, which kind of cleared the way for an application for UGB amendment. The school district has submitted their application for the UGB amendment to bring this property into the city's urban growth boundary. In the agenda packet, it does detail what that amendment process is. And so that application will come before you all as council at some point for you to approve at that point. Why we're coming to you all today. Is because there's, you know, the original intent of TA ROW, which stands for right of way. Was really that it was an area that was earmarked specific in association with TA one. And so, you know, there is the option for us to submit an application concurrently with the TA one application. We could wait on submitting the TA row application. And there's a lot of pros and cons for doing them, and I tried to comprehensively list them in the agenda packet. I will say I did talk to the school district about the TA row. And they submitted Brent Barry submitted a letter to you all the city council since he couldn't be here tonight. But his consultant who's helping him CSA is here to help answer any questions or represent the school district's thoughts. I also spoke with Harry and David today. Harry and David owns this large orchard property. Which is majority of that right of way, and I'm happy to share their thoughts as well. Long story short, the TA one is a very simple process and embarrassing because it's one piece of property with one owner. The difficulty with TA row is that it cuts across a lot of different properties. And it's kind of a there is a maximum link to it, but we could also choose to take any link with it that we wanted. The and with that, I don't go into too many details, and this might be a long meeting, I will leave it to there for questions.
Anybody with questions or comments? Council Penamrose.
Yeah, I'm just wondering that if we were, let's say we take the staff recommendation, go ahead with TA one. Postpone TA row, do we lose any efficiency in the process? Or would? And this is what it sounds like, including TA row. Perhaps introduce a drag on the process for the school district getting TA one.
Yeah, so we did. So the efficiencies in the process will be very, very minimal. You know, the more that we've dove into what the UGB amount of processes. The bulk of the work is really creating that application. The application itself is a conceptual master plan as well as documentation of findings, where we're making sure that master plan. Corresponds to a whole bunch of different sets of rules. So there is a strong likelihood that if we do link TA Rose application with TA one, we're cheeking to the county if we decide to move forward with the TA row at this time, they want us to link the two together. You know, it would cause likely a lot of drag on the TA one application. And that drag is is one, because, you know, city staff would need to prepare the master plan and their report. And then two, you know, TA Rose is so much more complicated and it does impact so many other property owners. Thus far, we've had a lot of feedback that that folks want to know more about the design. They want to be able to be more involved in the process. So it's likely to get a lot more contention going through the process.
Do you have additional questions, counselor?
Yeah, a follow up. So then at a later date. Perhaps when perhaps after TA ones developed and we have a better idea of what might work there or not work there. We could then do the same process for TA row. And it would essentially be the same thing, just at a later.
Yes, just at a later date. And I will say, you know, staff's opinion, school district's opinion, whoever, you know, it is a great project. And something that, you know, will add a lot, especially when that field is being used. So it is something that I look forward to moving forward on in the future.
Thank you.
Mayor, I believe you're muted.
Thank you. Okay, so are there any other comments or questions? So I would certainly entertain a motion. Council Penamrose.
I was just wondering if there might be anyone who wishes to speak on this item.
Oh, yeah. Are there any speaker request? Thank you, Council Penamrose. Are there any speaker request forms on this item? Hector?
I have not received any speaker request item, speakers request for this item, although we have a large audience, we can.
If there's somebody in the audience that wishes to speak on this item, please raise your hand. And it looks like we have two, so let's bring Jay Harland forward and. Hello, Mr. Harland, if you can unmute and then state your name and your your city for the record, and if we could ask you to turn on your your video, please.
Yeah, I'm not sure why my video isn't coming up. I think I have it turned on, but oh, there we go. Let's see. I don't know, my video is not turning on for some reason. At any rate, thank you, Mayor. For the record, Jay Harland with CSA Planning with offices at forty four ninety seven Brown Ridge in Metburg, and we are the, as Jordan mentioned, the consultant for the school district on the UGB amendment. And I didn't have anything specific to say other than I think. I think. Mr. Berry's letter to the to the council sort of framed the position of the school district, and we're happy to answer any questions. I would say we agree with staff report and we agree with the comments that Jordan had. And and the the additional thing that I would, I mean, I agree with everything she said. The additional thing I would point out too, as far as the point, the TA right away is just in the future. I think there's a lot, some plant transportation planning and sort of design work for that. That is really kind of going to inform that UGB process and in responding to Counselor. Panaramas. Question, the the marginal additional work to actually do the UGB amendment, once that transportation planning work, I think is is not a lot. So I mean, it's a process. It'll take a little bit of time, but in terms of the total work for bringing that project concept to reality and getting to construction. The the UGB part, I think, is a very small, is a very small component of. But I don't have anything else to add unless the unless the council has had questions of of from the district's perspective.
Thank you, Mr. Harland. Council Byers, do you want to ask to relax the rules to engage with the speaker heard? Okay, go ahead.
I had a question, actually, that just popped up for me. For Jordan.
Okay.
For Jordan. Jordan, I'm just curious what sort of timeline you see necessary for the amount of community engagement you you feel is important to. To make sure needs are met by the property owners would be impacted by this.
Yeah, I think I think, you know, as Jay said, the design is really what's key to most folk hearts, to like really understand what it would look like. And then, of course, we need to know the design to know, you know, what with the right of way to take. I think we could begin having those community questions, you know, come this fall. It's interesting because there is a lot in the works that can help that will shape the design. For example, that new wildfire risk map that came out. Is going to influence what kind of buffer we can put between the agricultural orchards and the houses. For example, in the regional plan, one of the acceptable buffers are those, you know, really tall dense trees that we now know are really fire hazardous. So I think in some ways we'll wait for more rules to come out. But if, you know, as things start to calm down with the rebuild, would really love to start early twenty twenty three engaging in those conversations. Particularly since there's so much transportation funding out in the world right now.
Any follow ups, Council Byers?
Yes, it's a follow up question, and perhaps Jordan can answer this, or perhaps you, someone else on council or you, Mayor, can help with this. If that's the case. With a necessary timeline starting no later than the end of this year, beginning of next year. Do we need to, would it be helpful if we are making a motion to support that option? To amend any of these potential motions for more specificity about timeline of. Planning process versus application process.
You know, from from my point of view, what I would prefer from the staff level is just as much flexibility as possible. To address this as things come up. So my my preference would be to leave it out of there, but if there is, if this is a really important project to the council, of course, please set a timeline and then we will. Keep you updated as we get close to that timeline and start implementing best we can.
Thank you.
I would just add, my input on that is that. You know, just given the overall history of this project and probably the, you know, the years to come that it will take. I I concur about adding flexibility in terms of the timeline, and one of the reasons I would add to that would be if there's any. Further outreach we can do to the community along that road to participate collaboratively with them on, you know, what this would look like and. And, you know, just the overall design, general design at this point, I think, you know, taking the extra time to do that would be helpful. Council Byers, did you have a follow up?
I did. Yes, thank you. That was I what I was getting at and wording. Unclearly, so I'm wondering if there is additional flexibility that would be helpful to add to any of these motions that we would be supportive of keeping that process open.
For me, the the third motion on the bottom directing us to only process TA one at this time gives us full flexibility to engage when capacity allows.
So I would I would just add that it doesn't say. So um, I would, I would just add that it doesn't say um to process it at this time. Did you mean to add that language for a particular reason, Jordan?
No.
Okay, um, Counselor Panomarov?
I gave my hand and my microphone mixed up. I'm actually ready for a mo- with a motion, um, if you'd like.
I would, if there's no other questions or comments. Please.
Uh, I move, and this is the third one, I move to direct staff to move forward forward with T A one U G B amendment process.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move uh to direct staff to move forward with the T A one U G B amendment process. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Panomarov, do you wish to speak to your motion?
Yes, I do. I I just wanted to say I was, I really appreciate the thoughtfulness from uh the school district from um Jordan and staff on this. I'm I'm a big fan of uh, you know, transportation of the future. More walkability, more uh climate friendly transportation. And as there's so many things on the horizon uh with regard to climate friendly areas and um what we're learning about wildfire buffers and keeping us all safer. I I think that there i- it would be too early to press forward. I think we um, we have an opportunity to uh educate ourselves with, you know, the the new ideas and the new laws that are uh coming down with respect to transportation. So I I can see this stretching out um a little further into the future and the and the next step to be uh really uh education um on what is possible and and what's healthy. So I'm fine postponing the uh T A Row.
Yeah, I I would just echo that. Um, I would appreciate an opportunity to work out some of the details on this project with the current staff. And um, I I I see, I think there's some innovation on this team and um probably stuff we haven't talked about before. So that would be really interesting to do. Any other comments or deliberation? All right, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Panemirov?
Yes.
Counselor Greider?
Yes.
Counselor Pesteza?
Yes.
Counselor Byers?
Yes.
Counselor Parry Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Hector. All right. Uh, the next item on the agenda is uh item nine is new business nine point one is ordinance twenty-two dash nine seven three dash O. Declaring a temporary ban on psilocybin service centers and the manufacture of psilocybin products. Staff report?
Great, I'm hoping, sorry, my technical difficulties. Can you see the slides again? This one is a wordy slide, so my apologies. Um, so this is coming for council really at the recommendation of the League of Oregon Cities. And since every other jurisdiction has brought this for their council, we wanted to make sure that that you all have the chance to weigh in on it. But just to share ballot measure one oh nine passed in November of twenty twenty. And that was the measure that allowed for the manufacturer, delivery, and then administration of psilocybin at licensed facilities. You know, as part of that ballot measure, Oregon Health Authority um has been assigned to regulate and build the rules up for the manufacturing and provision of psilocybin through that measure one oh nine. And, you know, talent did pass measure one oh nine, I think about sixty-nine point two percent in favor. So we're at a point where this program is going to roll out early twenty twenty-three. One of the struggles that jurisdictions are facing is that O H A has not completed the rulemaking process. And so we have not been able to review the regulations or understand how they may be implemented or roll out within our city limits. Um, so really, we just don't have really any information to to help predict um, or see if there's any additional regulation the city of talent would like to have in place. So before you all, is it an ordinance that would put a two-year ban on the um service centers of psilocybin or the manufacturing of psilocybin? What this two-year ban does is it's the reason it's two years because it pushes it to the next state election cycle. Um, but since the rules were published in early twenty twenty-three, it gives staff the time to review them, then them to counsel the community to see if there's any land use regulations or the like um that talent would like to have in place before the rollout. Um, this ordinance, you know, while you make the ordinance, it legally has to go to voters once the ordinance is passed. So if it is passed tonight, it will be put on the November twenty twenty-two ballot. And the town voters will decide if they want to support that ordinance or not. Um, the one other caveat is to get it on to the November ballot is we do need to pass it as an emergency declaration. Just to be able to submit it in time for the due date. And with that, I'd love to take any questions.
I have a question. Do we have a staff recommendation on this item?
No, I I did talk to all the department heads. The difficulty for with staff, you know, the the safe, the safe path is to wait two years and we can really do an assessment of how that rollout will happen. Um, at this time, we have nothing to go off of to to say, hey, this program will roll out easily or no, it won't. So our, as I would say, our our recommendation is to place that temporary ban. Though it will ultimately go to the voters to make that decision.
So are you saying the staff, this, I, did you say that your recommendation is to place it uh to place the ban?
My recommendation is to place the temporary ban.
So, um, I, you know, if, I guess what I I'm asking you from a procedural standpoint, had this just been an L O C um kind of action that was traveling around the state and it came to us without a staff recommendation? The next question I would ask is if the council wanted to entertain it um as an item before them. But if we're, if this is coming to us uh with a staff recommendation, um, I certainly will entertain it. And uh, and I'll start by entertaining questions for staff.
Mayor, I would love to just add some context, if you all don't mind, because I did text base with other city managers and other jurisdictions to see just the community response and feedback, recognizing that, you know, we didn't have as much time to let the community know that this is a discussion topic. So at the county, the county did consider this ordinance as well for their unincorporated areas. You know, and they did have about forty to fifty folks sign up to speak on this agenda item. Um, the large majority of which were against having the ordinance go on the ballot. Because they were looking forward to having those services quickly available for therapeutic use. Um, I think the numbers are told to you that out of that forty to fifty, only three spoke in favor of a ban.
Yeah, and I, one more time just for the uh, because I don't, I don't think I caught the um, the voting percentages here in talent. Did you mention that earlier?
Yo, the measure one oh nine passed in talent with sixty new sixty-nine point two percent um of the vote.
Okay, are there any questions or comments? Counselor Clark?
Yeah, I would like to ask staff if um, if they believe that the citizens would vote differently. This uh, this time than they did just very recently for some reason?
I do not think that that the citizenry will vote differently, and I will share if this ordinance gets adopted and if it gets moved to the ballot. You know, the city, the city and city staff cannot play a role in promoting it in one direction or the other. Um, once something gets referred to the ballot, it's a very specific way that we can let communication get out there. Um, I will say from being a a newer city manager, it would be a great opportunity for my staff to experience placing something on the ballot. Um, that would be the flip side positive.
Thank you, Jordan. Uh, Counselor Panomarov?
Yeah, um, well, I don't, I I'm not in favor of putting this on the ballot. I think that um you know, besides the fact that our uh community overwhelmingly uh supported the state measure. I think for the city to take a stand, which what this ordinance would mean would be to essentially say, um, we would like to propose and to withhold this potentially uh life-saving um medical care from folks in the city. And at the same time, we would be uh stifling local business, uh businesses who wanted to um provide this care for two years. So there, I I see um no reason to uh support this ordinance or this motion. The only thing I'm not sure about is whether uh procedurally, um, if that's if that were my intention, would it just be to not make a motion? Or to make some sort of an anti-motion, which I, you know, I'd rather not do, but to say, you know, uh, we don't approve of uh the ordinance. So uh, so there's a procedural question in there, but yeah, I I I don't see, um, I really don't see the point in uh just uh following uh the fashion set by the the League of Oregon Cities. Just for for the experience.
I'll answer the procedural question. So um, it's, it, while it's not, uh, you know, it's not against any practice for someone to provide a uh account, you know, an anti-motion or a counter motion. It's really not necessary. So what procedurally can happen are a couple of things. One is that somebody could actually make the motion that is provided for here and uh without a second, it would fall to the floor. Some uh, the council could uh choose not to make a motion at all, and without a motion, it falls to the floor. Someone can make a motion in a second uh and deliberate it, and then um it would be subject to the majority vote as usual. Um, so those are the three, probably the most likely options. And of course, there's the other option would be to somebody make a motion in a second. And then if somebody amended the motion in some way, um, we would, we would uh proceed on the amendment and then come back and proceed on the uh proceed on the question. So I hope that answers your question.
Point of information?
Yep.
Yeah, so that was an excellent answer. There's just one little piece of it that I'm not sure about. I understand from Robert's rules, and I don't know if that would hold here, that whoever uh makes the motion is on the hook for supporting that motion. And I think the idea is so you don't make frivolous motions just to vote against them. I know that's not true for the second. So that's my understanding of Robert's rules. I'm wondering, and and I guess this is a question uh for you, Madam Mara's Presiding Officer. If the, if uh, could somebody make a motion and then um vote against uh their own motion?
It's my understanding that you can, uh, but I wouldn't um hesitate to refer to the rules um for a moment and uh just verify that. If everybody wants to, uh, Madam, Madam Vice Chair, if you want to go ahead and take the rest of the questions, I'll look at Robert's rules really quick.
Uh, sure. Uh, Counselor Clark, I saw your hand next.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I um, I do not support putting this on the ballot because um the uh residents of talent and the whole state of Oregon uh just voted uh on this and um and in talent very significantly. I think it's unfortunate to see the various jurisdictions across the strict uh state trying to overturn what uh Oregon voters have approved. And I think a lot of this stems from irrational fears, and we have a law, a long history uh of irrational fears around drugs. And um and that has led to the destruction of a lot of people's lives. And one of those, one of the effects of of uh those uninformed fears is that uh, it shut down uh the research into um this compound and similar uh chemical compounds. That was um happening in the uh, I think as early as the late forties, fifties, early sixties before there was any association with uh um counterculture or or any such thing. And that that research was shut down. And and it's only recently that uh the pace of that research has begun to pick up again and with very, very promising results. People are are able to use these compounds to overw- uh overcome and work through some very, very difficult psychological challenges, including people who've been to war and are suffering from P T S D, people who have suffered from um other types of traumas, uh longstanding addictions. And so I supported measure one oh nine. Um, and I think um, you know, I consider it as a, as a, as a big step forward. And and that this is a uh a therapy that should be available. And I think uh, I, you know, I think uh the idea that we would declare an emergency um is is um uh just is so so far out of the realm um for me. I don't think that, you know, removing a ban on something that shouldn't have been banned in the first place constitutes an emergency. And of all of the drugs that we um, that we have in this country. Uh, I don't, psilocybin is the least of uh, least of anybody's worried. So um, I think this is a po- a positive step forward for Oregon, and I don't think that we need to put it uh on the ballot again.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. Counselor Pesteza?
Um, hi. Yeah, I would, I guess, echo everything that Counselor Clark just said. I too have looked into this a lot because it's, you know, it's been uh gaining more research and the research has been very promising. So I would definitely want to support um making it available to people as soon as it's um, you know, reasonable to do so. My only question about this, and it's, I guess, is directed at Gordon or Jordan, I mean, is, you know, there was some discussion about without the rules being available yet, we don't know what the impact on the city might be as it rolls out. And I guess I'm wondering if there's any um thoughts about what these potential impacts could be.
Uh, Jordan, do you want to respond to Counselor Pesteza's question?
Sure, I guess, you know, our best answer is we don't even know since our own knowledge of of psilocybin and how manufacturing works and how use works, you know, we just, we're just the lacking in a lot of knowledge. You know, typical, typical this kind of stuff is, you know, are we going to allow service centers within so many feet of schools? Are we going to regulate to just the, you know, manufacturing areas? We consider psilocybin, you know, a true industrial manufacturing that have to be in specific zones. You know, more around those types of land use decisions that a city would make.
Uh, does that, go ahead, Counselor.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, and then I think those are good points, um, I guess, because at least I don't know specifically, you know, what the manufacturing process would be. But intuitively, it seems like it wouldn't be very hazardous or very uh toxic in any way, since this is just, you know. I don't even know if they extract anything from the mushrooms or if they just, you know, basically make sure the mushrooms are, you know, healthy and not contaminated and then make them available after testing, you know, dose, you know, dose levels and things like that. But if we were going to be concerned about, I guess, if we didn't pass this ordinance. I guess we would just consider this to be something, I guess that's what we'd have to decide is is what zones would we allow this in? And um it seems like we could have that discussion and do some research into, you know, what the impacts of processing this material may be, because it's not like it's not being done right now in places. And so it seems to me it wouldn't take too much effort to figure that out.
Jordan, do you want to respond?
Yeah, I just want, yeah, so my understanding of this is, you know, it's gonna, if if we don't, um, if we don't put a ban on it right now, it will roll out in twenty twenty-three. And if we want to put any further regulations around it specific to within our city limits, we would have to do that by putting it on the ballot. So the next opportunity we would have to regulate it more strictly than the way O H A places it would be for that November twenty twenty-four election. Um, though Counselor Panomarov has given a look, so I immediately.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Is that true? Go ahead.
That is my understanding of why it's the two-year ban is because it is only through the putting it to the local voters if they want to make a change to a state-passed measure.
So so I'm sorry, I was, I was, um, you know, I think if if we want to ban it or put a moratorium or something like that, it would have to go to voters. I don't, I don't know that there's any problem with um, you know, putting some some zoning around it. I don't know that that would have to go to the voters. Is that your understanding?
I guess my best answer is is I don't know, because there's so little. I guess my best answer is, is I don't know, because there's so little known about this program.
Well, but there is known, sorry, I'll just did a little research over the weekend. It's actually spelled out in the state law that you have to be within like a thousand feet away from a school, unless there's some sort of barrier, and in that case, 500 feet. And I think that the the rules process is happening now. And if folks are interested in participating in, they can apply to be part of Rules Advisory Committee. And those, those applications, the application process is open until next week, August 10, and the information is on the website, the Secretary of State. I'd certainly encourage any, anybody that's concerned to to follow that process and to add testimony and weigh in. But I think the concerns that would be from the City of Talent to some extent have already been reflected in the law itself and will be part of the statewide process. Counselor Pesteza.
Yeah, just a follow-up to make sure I'm understanding what Jordan said. So if we in two years, there's an opportunity to vote on this. You know, whether we, and I guess I'm asking if I understand this correctly. If if we were to pass the ordinance, then there, in two years, there could be a vote on whether I guess I'm not even sure what the vote would actually be about. But if we didn't pass this ordinance, then, and then we wanted to change something, it would have to go on the ballot in two years as well. So I guess I'm wondering what's the difference if there's a ballot coming up that this could be on or not be on, whether we pass this ordinance or not now.
Yeah, I can go ahead and clarify that. So this specific ordinance, if if council adopts this ordinance, and then the talent voters say yes and approve, approve this ballot measure, this local ballot measure, what will happen is that there will be a ban for two years on the manufactured or administration of psilocybin. At the two-year point, it'll naturally sunset. And and then, you know, folks start manufacturing and they could start, you know, having their service centers force of this haven. Unless City of Talent puts another ballot measure to the local voters if they want to expand, extend that ban or do a permanent prohibition of the use of psilocybin into city limits. Counselor Pesteza, does that answer that question?
Yeah, that helped me understand it better. Thanks.
Yeah, and I will say for those small changes, I would have to do some research and get back to you all around what actually, at what point does the need to go to voter to put additional regulations on it or not? The truth is that at this time, I'm, I don't know the correct process for that.
So to the procedural question, the maker of a motion, though he can vote against it, cannot speak against his own motion. And I would say his or her motion or their motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for that clarification. Would you like your gavel back?
Yes. So if there's a, no, for the questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, there's a hand raised in the attendees.
Okay, well, Hector, I don't see.
Derek Volkart, just a bit outside the City of Talent in Jackson County. And I'll be quick, just because I know you guys have a big agenda, and I just wanted to say a couple of things about this issue. One is that I do think that if you held a vote, the numbers would be different. If history is any guide, then talent isn't abnormal in the state of Oregon. If you roll back to November of 1994, I'm sure there's plenty of people that remember the election where Oregon's Death with Dignity Act Initiative, the Citizens Initiative was first on the ballot, and it it passed by a margin of 51 to 49 percent. And a few short years later, in November 97, a measure was placed on the general election ballot to repeal that, and the voter spoke loud and clear, 60 to 40, not to repeal it. And so I, I just think that it's it's indicative of how Oregonians respond when the will of the voters are is trying to be thwarted or overturned. It's, at least that's the way I read it back in the, back in the day. And then just one more thing, I just wanted to suggest, and maybe I'm missing something as far as all of our building codes. You know, each, or not the codes, but the zones. When you, when you look through each zone, you've got buildings and uses permitted, subject to whatever review. But I just don't know where these service centers, any of this stuff would fit in to the zone to begin with under the use, under each, each one. But I may have missed that in the report as well. Maybe that was addressed, and I didn't see it. So that's all my comments. Thank you for your thoughtful discussion on this issue.
Hey, any other speakers?
I see Melody Golding.
Hello, Melody, please state your name and your city for the record. You're muted, Melody. We're hoping we could ask you to turn your camera on. I should rephrase that. We're asking you to turn your camera on. We're hoping you can. Can you, I don't think we can hear you. And I do see that you've turned your microphone on. Okay, Melody, we will be happy to take your comments. If you come back and you get your technical issue resolved, we'll be happy to circle back to you. All right. So Hector?
Mayor, I see Courtney Booklo in the audience. Just raise your hand.
Okay. Let's bring Courtney forward and ask her to state her name and city for the record. I think we just brought Melody back.
Sorry, I think we lost Courtney. I see Melody can speak.
Okay. Okay, Melody, do you want to try unmuting and see? Oh, we lost her. She might be having signal issues, and I see something in the chat. Oh, yeah, so we're gonna, this is in a Q and A section, so we won't be taking that unless that person wants to come forward and speak on the record. Do we have a phone call coming through, Hector?
I see a phone call. We'll give the phone call permission to speak.
I'll give it another moment because I want to make sure that everybody's had an opportunity to speak if they want to. All right. So if anybody wants to ask any more questions or make any more comments, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. I see no motion. So the, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. The next item on the agenda is item 9.2, which is Presentation of the Proposed Urban Renewal Plan Impact on City Financials Staff Report.
Thank you. I'm just pulling up a separate slide deck here.
Can I ask you a question real quick? Because I have read your staff report, and I think it would be helpful. I know I keep asking. It's sort of like Groundhog Day, but if you wouldn't mind, just kind of giving an overview of just the recent steps in the process, where we're at in the process right now, and where we're going, if that's not already built into your presentation.
Let me go ahead and start with that one. I did not build that in. So that's a great point. So tonight I will be doing just an informational presentation to City Council, just of my understanding of the impacts of the proposed urban renewal district. On August 16, City Council is going to have a special work session where they will review all of the written feedback from the impacts in taxing districts and talk through what they would like to do with those recommendations. And then on August 17, we will have a public hearing at our regular city council meeting. And that public community will come to give input. And then the council will have the chance to do the first read of the ordinance that would implement this plan. And then on August 24, we'll have a special meeting, and that will be for the final read and vote by City Council on if they would like to move forward with implementing the proposed urban renewal plan. So I'm going to do that really quickly because I did a lot of words. August 16 is a work session, a special meeting. August 17 is the public hearing, and August 24 would be the final vote.
I'd just like to add that we are currently in what's called a consult and confer. Do I have that in the right order? It's a confer, and so yeah, consulting confer, that's a 45-day period that started in July. And was it July or June 29, I think? Yeah, so started on June 29. It allows all of the, as Jordan has mentioned, allows us time to take all of the feedback and and provide us with an opportunity to weigh every, every jurisdiction's analysis on on the plan and and then provides us with considerably more options than the original plan as proposed. And that's the entire purpose of this 45-day consultant confer period is so that we can consider everybody's ideas and amendments, proposed amendments, and also feedback from our community. And and then take one of, you know, what what has now become many several options really to move forward. So or not at all, whatever, whatever pleases the board. So in terms of options for consideration. So with that, I'll go ahead and hand it back to Jordan. I appreciate, I appreciate your overview of the the dates so that everybody that's in the audience is aware of what happens when.
Thank you, Mayor. So as you said, we are in this consultant confer period. And one of the impacted jurisdictions of this plan is the City of Talent. So I will be presenting to you all tonight my analysis of how the proposal for renewal plan will impact city financials and what that might mean on future city services. I'm going to jump in. Can you all see my slideshow? Great. So then call my hutch pod show. Here we go. So before I start in today, I just want to give some reminders to everyone in the room. My presentation today is really to provide you all as counsel information so that you can digest it, follow up with more questions, and and we can go ahead as staff, get the answers to those questions for you to help inform your decisions along the rest of the journey of considering this process or this plan. And I will not be asking council to take any specific actions after my presentation. There's no motions attached. This is just a presentation of expected impacts. You know, in tonight's presentation, I will be speaking only to the city's financial impact from this plan. I will not be speaking about the impact to any other taxing districts. I will not be speaking about the impact of projects themselves. This is really focused on finances. And of course, the really difficult thing in talking about finances is understanding what numbers mean. And I have been, you know, in the government business for over seven years now, and I still don't really know what a million dollars means in real terms. It's really hard to swallow big numbers. And so throughout my presentation today, I'm going to try to do two things. Is I want to try to always talk in $2022. So because this plan is a 30-year plan, it's really hard to understand, you know, what $3 million in 30 years from now is actually capable of buying. So I have tried to shift all that into $2022 so that we can all have a better concept. And then two, where I can, I try to translate, you know, what dollars can actually do. And I do that mostly through FTEs, full-time equivalents of how much of those dollars are we talking about? How many salaries could they pay? And the rough estimate for how much, you know, I would pay for an employee that has been here for a few years is about $70,000, just so you all know that's a basis. Council Penaroff, can I answer something for you?
Yeah, so you threw me a little bit when you said you were going to use $2022 in talking about the future. And and the reason I'm I'm concerned, a little concerned is I believe that the projections that we've been looking at were in nominal dollars, so dollars for that period. I'm just wondering, are you going to address that so we understand?
So I'll address that right now. So your plan, actually, the plan itself is in both nominal and real. So it's nominal. So when we say that the plan is going to collect 75.5 million in that tax increment financing, that's nominal. That's, you know, whatever the the money has died along the way. But you have the number, which is the capacity, which is the translating that 75.5 million into $2022 to figure out how much money, you know, if we spend all that money today, what projects could we do with that 37.8 million?
Okay.
Yeah, and I will say it's the plan that provided me the the data I needed to do that translation. So the plan assumes a 4% inflation increase in 2024, and then a 3% inflation increase for every single year after. So in all my numbers today, I'm using the same assumptions that are shown in the plan.
Sorry, could you say that again? 4% today and how much every year after?
So 4% in 2024. And then 3% every year thereafter.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. And my last bullet here, I just want to hit home before I jump into the numbers, is I want to recognize, you know, what money means. And that, you know, we are a community that has been through such a deep trauma with the fire, and money can never replace what was lost. So even though I'm going to be talking in money terms today, I'm going to be saying money numbers. I just want us to ground ourselves and remind ourselves, you know, this is people. Ultimately, government talks best in numbers, but government is meant to serve people. And I just want us to start from that viewpoint today in recognition. So I'm going to dive right in. So in government, there should be no surprises. So I'm just going to give you my my outline today before I jump into the data. You know, the the plan as it's proposed now will significantly reduce the city's property tax revenue. Property tax is really what fuels our general fund. That general fund is what really fuels a lot of our core services. And so there is strong potential that that impact could could impact our services negatively. And so to maintain those services, we may need some additional resources. The one solution could be to amend the plan, and I will make some recommendations on how we can offset those negative impacts to the city's financials and thus the city's services. So that's what we'll be going through in today's presentation. And please feel free to ask along the way. I do have you on a separate screen so we'll all see any hands that come up or or physical hands that come up as well. So prior to the fire, we had a lot of neighborhoods in Talent that were, you know, thriving communities, happy neighborhoods. And the fire just brought so many buildings to the ground. From that single day, you know, we've lost 52.5 million in assessed value. And just to remind folks, especially those in the audience, assessed value is the value of the property that all the taxing jurisdictions collect their taxes off of. So we lost 52.5 million assessed value immediately after the fire. And 75% of that loss is currently in the urban renewal boundary. And so what happened in that one day is that the city was already set to lose a total of about 170,000 in our property taxes that we had received the year before. 128,000 of those property taxes coming specifically from that urban renewal boundary that's being proposed. So the plan as is, what it does is it freezes the start date. So the plan as is, what it does is it freezes the start date of the urban renewal district, so it freezes the value of that urban renewal area to what it was immediately after the fire. So automatically, by freezing at that base, the city is already facing a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar annual reduction in taxes that we would have seen prior to the fire. So that's a bit under two employees on current salary levels. You know what is, I think, fueling all this conversation is the rebuild isn't going to just replace that D two million that was lost. What we're seeing is that rebuild is brand-new construction, entire density construction. And so we're seeing a huge increase in assessed value from what was there before the fire. From from the rebuild that's going on. And so if you look at the lifetime of the plan of this thirty years, and you average out how much property taxes will go, taking into consideration the rebuild, the higher assessed value that's coming down the pipeline. You know, the city is going to pergo on average two hundred and ninety thousand per year for those thirty years. You know, looking at how to that is from urban renewal versus what was from just the rebuild that's happening, about two hundred and ten thousand of that is coming from the rebuild. And reminder, you know, the city would have expected to get about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand per year from that urban renewal area boundary. So we are seeing an almost doubling of value in that area. And I want to recognize that because, as you know, the council said before, that's extra money that we never would have thought to have received as a city. So we're a hundred and twenty-eight thousand in the hole from what we had. That area is growing really quickly. We'll have a higher assessed value. And so we will also lose those potential additional revenues from the naturally higher property values that are going in there. Why does this matter? You know, city services, my biggest resource is the employees I have and the work they can do. And I apologize, this is a teeny tiny slide for you all. But really, what it does is it takes every single year how much is projected that the city is going to lose in property taxes to Tura. And this is adjusted to those twenty twenty-two dollars. And you can see it doesn't average out. I gave you an average of two hundred and ninety thousand a year. But see, it starts at a hundred and sixty-three thousand and it's faded and at about four hundred and sixty-one thousand lost. And what it shows here is the number of employees that that means to me as a city manager. And why that matters is because it's the employees we have that really get the core city work done. As you can see here, just before the fire, we had thirty permanent city employees. And that's thirty employees that were on the city's payroll and were expected to stay on that payroll. You know, now we are down to having twenty-six permanent city employees for a lot of different reasons. But one thing that I would love to see the city get to is to get back up to our regular thirty stack level to be able to provide the full complement of city services.
I would like to ask you for a point of clarification on that. Jordan, I I don't want to interrupt your presentation, but again, I don't want any misinformation inadvertent from the presentation. Are we at twenty-six employees because of your current budget or because of hiring challenges and and things like that?
So we're at twenty-six employees. We have, so that was at the end of twenty twenty, that was June twenty twenty-two. This budget, we did add in two and a half additional employees so that I'm hoping to bring back up to twenty-eight point five through this fiscal year twenty-three budget. We currently have more employees on staff in those twenty-six right now, but they are grant funded. They're not permanent employees. They're based off of grants that will run out in about a year.
And those are the backfilled funds from the original losses from the fire, correct? The M one, I think it's M one. Yeah, right. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. That answers my question.
Of course. So with this employee count, you know, our experience right now as staff is it's hard to keep up what's going on. I'm sure council has noticed, I'm sure the community has noticed, weed abatement is so hard for us to keep on top of. It's such a core issue, given the fire that did occur here. You know, we have our public works out there every day, all day long, working some weekends trying to get those weeds down, and currently the weeds are winning that battle. You know, we've been struggling to keep full-time police patrol coverage. That's mostly due to some staffing issues, website updates, code enforcement, you know, community engagement. We're struggling to keep up with the work. There's also a lot of things that we want to provide, and I know council has asked us to provide. The staff would love to, that currently we don't have the capacity to do, such as regular town halls, water conservation programs, like they have in Ashland with the the showerheads and the toilet leaks, helping do extreme weather shelters and helping start a cert program. These are all things that, though, when I ask staff weigh heavy on us, they really think they'd be perfect for talent community needed, and we feel like we're not able to make progress forward on them. And the reason I'm really sharing this is because that gap in property tax that we're losing could really help us fill the gaps to meet these city service needs. Because we are, you know, while we're struggling to keep up right now, we expect demand to increase even further because of the rebuild that's going on in the burnt, the burnt star area. You know, looking at all of our permit data right now, we are averaging, or we're guessing about a twenty-five percent higher density in the rebuild areas when rebuild is complete. What I have shown for you all right here is a snapshot of Genghis, the Genghis neighborhood community. The yellow dots are houses that rebuilt back at the same density they had before. And the orange dots are lots that built back at higher density than they had before. You know, in this development, we have five proposed cluster cottages. We have a couple eighty U's going in. So originally, it was thirty-five lots in this neighborhood. They were primarily single-family homes, and there was a couple duplexes. Now we're seeing, and Kristen may correct me if they don't have my notes in front of me. You know, now we see forty-two units are either in the planning process or the building process, and there's still thirteen lots that are vacant and have not started the rebuild process. So if those thirteen lots build to their density code, which they are in higher residential, so they are, you know, would be required to have two homes on them. We could see a neighborhood that had about thirty-five lots and units to be up to seventy-two units. So we're seeing incredibly higher density than we were before. And naturally, as as density increases, we have more folks that we just might have more service demand that we want to meet. And I saw a hand go up, Counselor Byers, did you want to ask a question? Okay. And so, you know, the really common question with this is, well, isn't the city making more money come along? Like, isn't isn't revenue looking good for the future? When we look at the maps that are presented in that urban renewal plan, you know, we're seeing an increase in revenue. And I will say that this specific slide is nominal dollars, and these numbers come directly from the urban renewal plan. When we convert that to real dollars, it does tell a story a little more accurately. And it's actually, oops, sorry, those weren't supposed to go there yet. When we convert to real dollars, what we're actually seeing is we're seeing a decrease in revenue projected over thirty years. Why this is occurring is largely because our other sources of revenue for a general fund. The consultant did predict our decreasing, we did project our decreasing over time. So when we're talking about loss of property taxes, it really does impact our general fund. And impacting our general fund really does impact our ability to provide services to the community. So that's when we get to the conversation about looking for additional revenue sources to offset the foregone revenue and help maintain city services over the long haul for our community. Yeah, Counselor Penamara?
So are we looking at? Okay, so this is the entire general fund and not just property taxes?
No, this is all of the revenue for general fund.
This is all of the revenue from the general fund?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, so some sources of additional revenue for cities is always grants. You know, one thing that the city has very much learned post-fire is grants take a lot of staff capacity to manage. One, to apply for, two, to manage. And there's a lot of restrictions on how grant money can be used. And so my fear is if we use grants to offset additional revenue, that we could really struggle with the staff capacity to manage those grants, if we're using grants to help offset staff capacity. You know, the second option is utility charges, which is, you know, placing additional charges on the utility bill like we have for our street fees, like we have for our public safety surcharge. You know, this is common. I know City of Ashland is looking into this option right now for their budget struggles. You know, the the thing that, you know, hits at my heart with utility charges is that they weigh more heavily on lower-income households. And I know the whole intent of this urban renewal plan is to best support those households that are least likely to be able to come back, which are those lower-income houses and affordable housing. Tax levies, tax levies are things that the voter decides to vote in and have an additional levy that's voter-approved. Pardon me, my mouth, I drink all my water, my mouth's getting dry, it's hard to form words. You know, the great theme of these is they're voter-approved, so you know, they're a good thing, but I am concerned that a lot of the messaging around the urban road plan is that we're not going to increase taxes, that it's just a reappropriation of taxes. So I'd be hesitant to ask for more taxes on our community. Another topic that's come up as a potential that I've heard come from some members is, you know, what about outsourcing? What can we look for cutting costs by outsourcing to other folks to do rather than holding things within within house? Outsourcing makes me is very difficult for me as a as a manager. One, because outsourcing typically saves money for the first few years. But then as their costs rise, the city has very little control of costs. Two, outsourcing is typically often the folks outside of this area. And so we're seeing dollars go not staying within our community, not supporting community members working for the city. And then we also lose institutional knowledge. If we're outsourcing any stupid city services to other groups, they're gaining knowledge. If we move to a different provider, we lose all that knowledge. And I will say, being a new city manager and with a relatively new staff, institutional knowledge is its own weight in gold. So those are concerns, like with those sources of funding. So really, what I'm trying to point to is property tax is a really strong backbone for the city's revenue. And so, yeah, Counselor Prestizo?
Yeah, I don't, I just feel compelled to sort of echo what you're saying, having, you know, worked in local government and having consulted for local government. I I would agree with what you're saying. Grants can be really helpful, but they do take a lot of time. And it's, and when you're strapped as it is, that becomes really hard to find the time to put in a good grant application. And if you don't put in a good one, you might not get it. So then you have to wonder why you're even trying. And then some of the grants really require a lot of oversight, and that offsets what they can do. So you have to be really strategic about what grants are worth trying to get with clear goals on what you're hoping to accomplish with them. And in outsourcing, I agree as well. Having worked, sort of worked on both sides of that, sort of that institutional knowledge is pretty critical. And I agree that outsourcing can seem good initially, but then it does, you know, you you start becoming dependent on the knowledge of the people who are consulting, and you sort of lose the ability to make those decisions on your own because you're not really in the nitty-gritty of doing that particular task. So I just felt like I needed to state that. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Counselor Penamara, I think the mayor was muted.
Oh, yeah, I was just gonna say, what I said was, I echo what Counselor Prestizo said, we've actually experienced a lot of what he described in in talent in in past years. Counselor Penamara?
Yeah, it it was a question about outsourcing. Is it, is it more nuanced than that? In that some types of work, you definitely don't want to outsource for those reasons, but other types of work are do well with outsourcing, or is it more of a across-the-board kind of thing?
I will say, in my experience, you know, I have yet to find when outsourcing is super beneficial for a core service. Short-term, on-time projects, like, for example, with the rebuild, we've had a lot more floodplain management issues. So we have outsourced it for a period of six months to someone else to look at floodplain management. Costs more than it would have done for a city staff to do it, but city staff just didn't have the capacity. My philosophy as a manager and a leader is to really employ people and people who are in our community and part of our community and really keep those dollars recycling in our community for those purposes. But yeah, if there is an area that you think is is best outsourced, that's always a conversation I'm willing to have with council.
Thanks.
Counselor Prestizo, your hand still up?
Yeah, I just wanted, again, support what Jordan's saying. I think outsourcing works really well for specific projects where you, you know, you get something accomplished for you that you don't have the capacity or maybe the knowledge base to do. I do that a lot in my current job in Medford. But it's it's very strategic and very specific to almost tasks more than services. And so I would agree with what Jordan's saying.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, so what's all this pointing to is, you know, my ask of the council to really consider is, is how can we maintain that backbone of property taxes as one of the main funding tools of the city? You know, two ways that we could still keep the benefits of urban renewal. You know, we have re-urban renewal can be a very useful tool, and there are areas in that burn scar that are going to need help rebuilding. So two ways that we can still help propel urban renewal forward while also protecting city services. And that is to delay the frozen base. So instead of freezing that property tax values of that boundary area, you know, immediately after the fire, is freeze it one year later in January twenty twenty-two, where we expect enough of the rebuild to happen, that we would be back to property tax revenues that we were just before the fire. This would allow us to get back to that, you know, thirty-person staff would allow us to really keep providing services at the level that we were prior to the fire. You know, another option too is, you know, we could delay it for two years. There'll be substantially more rebuild that will have occurred. And what that would give is back our hundred and twenty-eight thousand that we, you know, lost to the fire every year with an additional hundred thousand. And that hundred thousand would go a long way in augmenting city services, doing new programs, things like that. So those, those are two recommendations I'd like to put before the council to think about over the next few weeks and how it could impact the city and help support city services. But I recognize that they don't come without their own cost urban renewal. So I really want to be clear on what doing either of these offsetting choices would do to the urban renewal numbers. And so that's what this slide is here. So I'm going to walk through is what this table means. And I have a couple corrections before it, since I was able to talk to the consultant in the last twenty-four hours to better understand myself. So this first line is the current proposal. That is before you all, as a as a board, the current plan. So that's freezing the property tax base immediately after fire, so jittery twenty twenty-one values. It would collect a total of seventy-five point five million tax increment finding over its lifetime. The the agency could spend a maximum of sixty-two point five million on projects and administration. That's the maximum indebtedness. Converting that to those twenty twenty-two dollars, that's thirty-seven point nine million. The first year that the agency could go out for a bond and start spending money would be twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. And that kind of first year of tip of that first bond that you could go out for would be five point nine million. If we delayed the year first basically one year, and we keep it at the thirty-year mark, this is how the numbers would change. Total net tip would go down by about eleven or so million. But the biggest impact would be that first year of tip would be a bond for two point nine million. Now, here's the correction I want to make, and it's not clear in that in the staff report, so I'm going to hit this one home. So what you actually set when you pass a plan is you set the maximum indebtedness level. So if you all as council decided to freeze the base in January twenty twenty-two, but keep the max indebtedness of sixty-two point five million, what it would do is it would, the urban renewal would last for thirty-two years rather than thirty years. And it's just those two additional years will get you back to that sixty-two point five million dollar indebted, the maximum indebtedness level. So these numbers are all based off of thirty years. But if council decided to, they could keep that same level of maximum indebtedness and still have the same amount to spend on projects over the lifetime of the urban renewal. And then, of course, this bottom row is what would the scenario be if it was delayed two years? Can I answer any questions specific to this table or what the information is saying in the table?
Counselor Penamara?
Yeah, I just, I really appreciated what you said about the years and the maximum indebtedness. Yeah, I just, I really appreciated what you said about um the years and the maximum indebtedness. Uh, because if if these estimates are conservative, um then urban renewal could sunset, you know, far earlier. Uh, it must sunset when it, when it reaches its maximum indebtedness, correct? So the years are an approximation, uh data modeling, if you will.
Yeah, when you adopt the plan, what you're adopting really is that maximum indebtedness number. And then, and then whenever you hit that, that is when the urban renewal's lifespan is finished.
Any further questions on this graph? Okay?
Okay, well, I will say that's, you know, the end of my narrative. I do have some dependency as questions come up. Um, really want to go home that just, you know, my analysis is that the property tax, you know, will hurt financially speaking, you know, that that impact, you know, is likely to impact our services. So we would want to look for additional revenue to be able to maintain services. However, I do believe that we can make some adjustments to the plan that can offset kind of the pain the city would feel and still be able to to meet the goal stated in the urban renewal plan. So with that, I will conclude the presentation and and open it up for any other questions. Um and as questions come up over the next two weeks, always welcome to to reach out to me at any point.
Gordon, uh, great presentation. Counselor um Penamrath?
Thank you. So, so at its basis, uh, the idea of urban renewal, whatever, whatever um reason or whatever you're trying to do with it, it's an investment for twenty years or thirty years until you reach maximum indebtedness. And so um when the urban renewal sunsets, uh, the taxes are higher for that area. And all of that uh increment is released to the taxing districts. At least that's my understanding. So I'm wondering if um the city has calculated what those year, say, say it's a thirty-year um process, what year thirty-one, thirty-two after the sunset looks like for the city? And also compare that into terms of what it would take in terms of reserves uh to offset that. So I'm wondering if that analysis has been done.
Yes, and I want to make some corrections to that statement if you don't mind, Councilor Penamrath. You know, I would never classify urban renewal as an investment to reach maximum indebtedness. You know what urban renewal is? It's it's a tool that is um redirecting tax dollars for reinvestment in an area. And this specific urban renewal plan has set the maximum amount of money that can be reinvested in this area at sixty-two-point-five million. In a typical urban renewal, yes, you're not going to get an increase in property value. You're not going to reach that maximum indebtedness without putting money into into the properties that are within that boundary. Um, but I do want to show you the analysis that I have done that I want to show and make clear. You know, so urban renewal is expected to help support the development within that urban renewal area. But I want to recognize that the majority of the development, the majority of the money that urban renewal will be collecting will be from rebuild that has occurred without the support of urban renewal. So I want to show that here. So overall, you know, on average, because it's not, you know, it's not a linear amount of money that's taken from us. But we can estimate that we're going to lose about three hundred thousand per year to urban renewal over thirty-year average. You know, from the permit data that I presented to the council, about how much rebuilders will have occurred before the urban renewal um start spending any money, that about two-thirds of that three hundred thousand dollars will have come from the rebuilt that's going on in our single-family home areas. Um, and so so about a third of the um urban renewal uh increase in value will be coming from urban renewal projects. Um, so you just want to make that distinction really clear because I didn't think there was a bit of a misnomer in there.
Yeah, and I appreciate, I appreciate that correction. I was really just out, I was really just after the um the what the windfall would be at the sunset. And I I apologize for misspeaking.
Yeah, so if you look in your accompanying report, I want to say page forty-two, but I could be wrong on that number. The consultant has put in the amount of tax revenue that they expect taxing districts to get the year after urban renewal ends. I think it's table twelve um within that accompanying report. I will say, and I and I don't have her in front of me, but I will absolutely be happy to get it to you. Our urban, our reserves in our general fund will not last the thirty years of the urban fund. Um, I actually wouldn't say that our reserves would last more than five years um at the level of property tax loss that we expect. Um, what also makes me concerned, you know, along the use far, right now, we, our general fund has high reserves. It is a really big number, and Tess will probably be looking it up, and I can call Tess aboard to see what that number is. A lot of those reserves are grant funds that are earmarked for a specific purpose and a specific timeline. So it's really an inflated reserve number right now that we will see decrease, decrease substantially over the years. Um, and you know, Tess and I are writing financial management policies that we would like to keep in place, that keeps a minimum in that reserve to make sure the city can stay solvent, you know, with the starts and stops of collecting revenue. Um, you know, I think the city has worked really hard to get back to a a five-to-six-month reserve within the general fund before the fire hit, which is awesome. Uh, you know, my minimal as a manager that I would like to see would be the minimum of four months. I wouldn't want to go below that four-month floor. So I would be nervous if we start dipping below that within our reserves, the general fund. Oh, Mayor, I think you're muted.
I think you said it was on page forty-two of the plan or?
No, the accompanying report. And the forty-two, that was from like six meetings ago, so look for table twelve. And this is my memory from talk from when Elaine presented to the county. But I can go ahead and pull up the report as well.
Yeah, if you would, because I, I've, I'm working on two screens in my agendas on one of them and the Zoom is on the other, so it's, it's hard for me to flip back and forth.
Yeah, I'm happy to to look it up while other questions come in as well.
Any other questions?
Okay. Well, perfect. If you want to, Mayor, turn to the audience while I pull up that table and page number for you all. Um, I want to say thank you to council for giving me the chance to share tonight.
Great. Um, okay, uh, Hector, the first thing I want to ask you is how many speaker request forms do we have?
Well, we still have Debbie Rappaport and Betsy Harshman from earlier. This is the agenda item that we'd like to address.
Right, so we'll add that to the sign-ups for this agenda item. How many is that?
I'm sorry, Mary.
Go ahead, Hector, please.
So we bring forward uh Debbie or Betsy?
Um, Jo, I I'm actually trying to set the timeframes, um Hector, so if you can give me a number of the speaker request forms, that will help me.
Well, prior to the meeting, I've only received two speaker request forms. Debbie Rappaport and Betsy Harshman, they emailed me prior to the start of the meeting.
All right, great. And then um and then uh just so I have a count, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to also speak? I see three other speakers. All right, so it looks like we're going to have about a total of seven, so I'm going to set the time limit to three minutes. And I'm going to ask Hector to uh work a timer. If you're in a position to do that, if not, I would be happy to ask uh um vice chair or vice or council president Penamrath, if she could do that, either, either or.
I think I saw Jordan raise her hand uh to volunteer.
Yeah, I'll happy to play that role so that council can can listen.
Great. Perfect, okay. So let's go ahead and start with who emailed you? Or who has speaker request forms?
We can start with Betsy Harshman. I do see her in the audience.
Great. Hello, Betsy, um, please state your name and your city for the record.
Betsy Harshman, City of Talent. I keep looking, should I start?
Yes, we'll start the timer as soon as you start talking. Um, and I do want to let you know that we'll give you a one-minute warning so that you have um enough time to kind of close your comments, okay?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I keep looking for reasons to support the Tura plan, but only find more reasons to question why I should. Please take a step back and vote no to proceed at this time. You have community members, county commissioners, Fire District Five, the City of Phoenix mayor, and your own executive director telling you to rethink taking taking so much money from their budgets. How can you even consider moving forward with such drastic opposition from residents and community allies? Won't you please listen, slow down, and work with everyone? You only seem to be alienating your neighbors, and that's actually kind of embarrassing. I've lived in talent for over forty years and were two houses outside of city limits. With the fire danger in our area, what gives you the right to take money from the fire district that serves us? What gives you the right to take money from your own city? What city services are you okay with cutting if you go forward with your Tura plan? Won't you listen? Please take a step back and work with our community partners, be more transparent, slow down and vote no on moving forward so fast with the Tura plan. Our community is depending on you to do the right thing for everyone. Thank you.
Sorry, Mayor, you're muted still.
I may never, ever uh get used to this. Um, thank you, Betsy. Um, Hector?
Uh, Debbie Rappaport.
Yes, um, my name is Debbie Rappaport, and I live and I'm a business owner in the City of Talent. Um, first, uh, I look forward to the day when these meetings are uh a face-to-face, in-person, community event. And perhaps we could have that on August seventeenth. Uh, for some time, it's been difficult to find information online that explains just what Tura is all about. Uh, just until the last few days, uh, I received mailings from the Fire District Five as well as the City of Talent that shed light on all of this. Um, and specifically to the deficit to Fire District Five. Before the fire, our town's business economy was suffering the impact of COVID. Some even closed for good. Before the fire and COVID, our town, as well as our entire state, was in need of housing on all levels, specifically affordable. It is a miracle our entire town did not burn down in the Alameda fire. Naturally, we all want to rebuild our city. But it should be do, but it should do so in a manner that does not take away monies from our fire district or anyone. Also, in reviewing the map of the proposed Tura district, it seems wonky and nonsensible to me because there are areas that are like just recently built that are actually in the boundary. Um, lastly, every time I hear a siren, I cringe. Every single time I hear a siren, I run outside and I look for smoke. I honestly believe we need to put more money into our fire district. Please, I oppose this Tura project. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie.
Here, those of the, uh, the speakers who have signed up are finished. Now I see audience members with their hands up.
Okay. Uh, so let's go, I'll, I'll, I'll go ahead and let you um bring folks in.
Okay, thank you, Derek Manzi.
Uh, good evening, board.
Derek, uh, Manzi, please state your name and your city for the record.
Uh, Derek Manzi, City of Talent. Uh, I just wanted to speak, um, because I know there's a lot of people speaking up now about the urban renewal and um I don't, I think it's a little miscommunicated, the people that are speaking out against it. Um, I'm not seeing that, uh, I'm not hearing that with the people I talk to. I've read through all of the letters that have uh been submitted and shown up in the agenda packets, uh, whether it be people for the the Tura or against it. And those that are against it aren't for the most part against Tura. What they're against is where the funding is coming from. And so I think that Jordan proposed uh two very good options in bridging the gap between, uh, you know, the people that are for it and the people that are against it and softening the blow of the funds that are coming from the taxing districts. Um, you know, particularly that, that first option that still allows that maximum indebtedness, um, but just, you know, if you still want to get that full amount uh available, just tax on a couple of years and just lessens that blow right out the gate of all that, you know, upfront funding that's going to be taken away. Um, so I I think it's a really reasonable um proposal for you guys to consider. So just wanted to put in my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Next, Hector.
Julie, uh, I see Julie Herzog.
Julie, I think you're muted. Yes.
Hi.
If you could state your name and your city for the record?
Yes, Julie Herzog, City of Talent. First of all, I want to thank you all for all of the um effort and energy you've put into this plan and trying to do the best for our city and the rebuild. Um, I really want to acknowledge that upfront. I think I understand the funding and I don't have any questions about that. I do agree with delaying the start date for freezing so as to not upset um partners that we need, particularly in regards to Fire District Number Five. But also just with respect to um other services, I was a single mom that raised three kids and libraries were such um an important thing for me in being able to level the playing field in raising my kids. And so there's other um maybe things that haven't been talked about. I'm, I'm also concerned about the expenditure side of the Tura plan because um as I understand how Elaine explained it, that money can only be spent in the Tura Plan District, which is only twenty-five percent of our city. And what about the needs of the other seventy-five percent? I also had some questions about some other areas in the city that um that looked blighted to me. I live really close to Nerton, and the road there is horrific. It's older mobile homes and um some of the other streets maybe near there are are also maybe in need of repair, and I wasn't sure how that got handled. I also had a question about the the map itself. It shows two areas for manufactured homes. And one of them was on the front of our paper um as being the first um resident-owned community. And so I didn't know how that would work along with the FEMA trailers and that area, if that's going to be kept with those particular manufactured homes at market rate because I understand their market rate now or how that's all going to work. And then, of course, when the plan does end, the manufactured homes, because they're not real estate, won't actually increase the property tax base. And so I just, um, I'm trying to understand this like a lot of people, and so I thank you again for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Julie.
Next is Chris, Chris Lutz.
Hello, Madam Mayor, it's Chris Loz in City of Phoenix. I appreciate you caring me. And, you know, I hate beating the same drums. I'm really going to say basically the same thing that the projected numbers for Tura must be reexamine. You got to work on numbers that are close to actuals. Now, tonight, Jordan said that the, she's seeing home increases and assessed value that are due to new construction. That's not part of the projections. Your projections call for a seven point two percent increase in value. When in the first year, many properties are going to grow by four hundred percent. The tax base is about a thousand dollars per home lot in the Urban Renewal District. When you build a home, the taxes go from a thousand to five thousand dollars or approximately that. The numbers aren't exact, but the point is that you're seeing about a four hundred percent increase in tax revenue in those districts, not seven point two percent. The numbers are so far off. Tonight, Jordan mentioned that she's noticed that there are tax lots, she used analysis of thirty-five tax lots that have, I think she said previously thirty-five to forty-two units. Now it's going to seventy-two units. This is not part of your projections. Now, the projections don't have to be exact, but they gotta come close. And those are the projections you need to use when you're approaching RBTD, Jackson County, other taxing districts. So, you know, in my mind, I don't think you're going to go with the Tura District this year. It's going to be delayed by a year, maybe two. But whether it's a year or two, you really gotta sit down, do a reassessment of the numbers and come up with projections that approach reality.
One minute warning, Chris.
Thank you very much. And guys, I do appreciate all of your efforts and I apologize last time for getting a bit animated. I thought the information being given out by some was a little bit inaccurate by talking about the, the Urban Renewal Districts using incremental financing, which is maybe a three percent gain in taxes to fund Urban Renewal. When in this case, it's much, much, much different. Like a little bit animated. I do apologize for doing so.
We appreciate, we appreciate hearing that.
But again, please reassess your numbers and wish all the best of luck with what you're doing. I do appreciate your volunteer efforts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris.
Next, we have Philip Lanny.
Hello, Philip. Please state your name and city for the record.
Yeah, Philip Lanny, Talent. I was really kind of, I don't know what the word was after this catastrophic fire we had that one would go after, you know, something that's health and safety, which to me is number one on any city or, or anything that, that's paramount. And I think it was more the funding on where you want to take this money. I, I, I like the idea where you're trying to, you know, better, better our community and stuff. But the funding source is really bad, you know. District Fire, that district fire goes from Phoenix all the way to North Ashland. And one of the things that happened in this town is probably if we had more services of fire, we wouldn't have had as many houses burn up because there was only like one pumper unit and a couple fire people and they had to go north because it was going into Medford. So if anything else, we need to increase fire services in here for the next fire. It's not if, it's when it's going to happen. So when you cut health and safety, I just really question that, you know. And I'm just trying to think is, is this good for the majority of the people, the taxpaying people in this town? Or is this a minority thing? And I, I just plead and hope that the council folks, when they vote, don't think of their personal feelings about what this is. But think about you're representative of all the people. And, you know, if the people want a certain thing, you're the representative and you're not there for your own wishes or your own things, which is a very hard thing to do when you're in that situation. So I, I like the idea, but I don't like where you're funding it. And in fact, I think that it could be in the future possibly catastrophic or, or or possibly dangerous if you start cut the funding for them. And I would actually increase it and maybe even have a talent volunteer fire department or something set up with monies because this will happen again. So thank you for your time and I appreciate your, your good works. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Phil.
Next, we have Courtney Bukolo. We may struggle with her audio as we did prior.
Can you hear me?
Yes, if you could state your name and your city for the record.
Hi, my name is Courtney Bukolo and I live at six one seven Talent Avenue. In Talent, I have a number of things to say. I am, I will start with the fact that I am upset about how this has gone. I, I think the, the Tura plan is a good plan for talent and for preventing massive disaster in the future. I think it's been very upsetting to see things like Fire District Five misusing public funds to you, to advocate for particular voting patterns. I think that's not a use of public funds. And I also think it's been upsetting that I feel like there's this whole team of people that are using the fear and, and actual trauma of this community in order to try and further a political agenda. And I will say, I am someone who is traumatized by how this went. We lost our home. And we had a bunch of, we have three young children and things went very poorly. We had to move four times in a year. We're back home. But at the same time, we're very privileged in that we were able to rebuild our home and come back. But in my day job, I work with the two hundred people that still are looking to come home. And to see these, these people using misinformation in order to try and slow this process or stop this process for political causes. Not, not because they're against Tura, because if they were against Tura, they would also be against the Phoenix Urban Renewal District that also takes money from the Fire District. But no, no one brings that up because really it's just the same, like seven people that we're all really accustomed to in Talent who fight everything that our government does. There's a pattern of commentary that's really negative that, that screams that they're just for info sharing and they're just for transparency. But at the same time, like when the, when the city government gives transparency and provides today the emails that they got from the, from the city, we all got a whole bunch of spam emails from someone in Grants Pass. So that these spineless people that are against Tura and Talent can pretend they weren't involved in it, that someone from Grants Pass just happens to email all of us with false information about us. Um, it just, it's just heartbreaking to see seven people in Talent throwing such a fit and breaking any sort of ethical codes and putting anonymous email, anonymous letters in boxes and just, I don't know. It doesn't seem okay. I have a bachelor's degree in policy analysis and a master's.
Next, we have Derek Bullcart.
Mayor, you're muted.
Um, I, that's probably she wasn't able to hear time and because I was muted. And rather than cut her off, maybe somebody could just remind, you know, let her know verbally. I, I wouldn't want to do that again. Okay, Derek, please state your name and what happened to Derek. Courtney, are you back?
Pardon me, mayor. I, I gave permission to Courtney once more. I do apologize for cutting her off, but her time was exceeded.
I apologize. Yeah, I had no idea.
Yeah, I, I, I was actually letting you know that you were at your three minutes and I was muted. So I apologize. It's really my fault. And so.
I only had, could I do like ten more seconds?
Well, you know, the thing is, is that I can't, maybe you could come back. Yeah, maybe you could come back and, and make some more comments.
I apologize. Yeah, don't apologize. I was at my end.
Yeah, thank you so much for your comments. We appreciate it. And is that it on the speakers?
I do, I did see Derek Bullcart's hand and I, I'm looking for him in the audience now.
He's there.
Pardon me.
Yeah, his hand is up. Derek, state your name and city for the record, please.
You bet. Derek Bullcart, just a bit outside the city of Talent, Jackson County. Hey, first, I just want to say I'm speaking, I'm just going to speak my comments tonight and I hope, hope that counts equally as written comments. It just appeared from reading the newspaper that that maybe letters were counted and, and comments, spoken comments weren't. I want to say I'm sympathetic to the position the city council's in tonight. I mean, there has been a great deal of noise, I think. Courtney was eloquent in describing just how toxic some of the communications have been. It's, it's much, it's been much better tonight, which is great. But yeah, I concur with that frustration and concern. One thing, I really appreciated Jordan's presentation and and it's, and it's good to get good to see the breakdown of the concerns that staff has. One thing I want to understand from the impact significance is not just the burdens that Urban Renewal brings to the city, but the benefits as well. I mean, certainly I was in a meeting, I think it's back in June, where city staff, and maybe it was before June, time seems to run together. It's, city staff was there, I think it was the city manager, public works director and the finance director, where they, and it may have been the joint session, where they added to the boundary for Urban Renewal with the idea being that Tura would be able to support capital improvement projects over time. I recall that Madison Street was one of the projects that, that was included. And so the map got drawn around Madison Street. And I can't recall all the projects and areas that were added in. And I acknowledge that Tura coverage of CIPs isn't guaranteed early in the process. But I do wonder generally what the price tag is for the projects, the CIPs in those areas and if the city manager contemplated calculating that as a possible benefit or offset to any loss of revenue. I would guess that those projects must be to the tune of millions of dollars, but I honestly have no idea. And I just think it's helpful for the council to have all the information. The, you know, that, that information seems valuable. And a complete analysis from the staff on the benefits, not just the burdens, would be helpful. And that's it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Derek. Any other comments? Any other speakers?
I don't see any additional. Courtney Bukolo has raised her hand once more or took it down. I'm sorry. I don't see any additional speakers, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Hector. Okay, so you were looking for a report for us while we were taking speakers?
Yes, and I was so far off what I told you, so my apologies. It's page thirty of the report table eighteen.
If you could screen share that, that'd be great.
Yeah, so this is something that Council Penaroff was mentioning. And what she was sharing is how much money do the tax, can the taxing district expect to receive back after the very last year the Urban Renewal ends? So in fiscal year end twenty fifty-four, when Urban Renewal sunsets in twenty fifty-three, you expected that the city is a total of one eight four million dollars back in, or receive one point four million in property taxes from the Urban Renewal area. A hundred and sixty-eight thousand of those dollars will be from the frozen base. So that's the hundred and sixty-eight thousand that the city will get every year, because that's what the base is frozen at. And the SSI, the value of the, in the thirty-year period is one point two million. And then what I just want to emphasize is that Tudor is coming from the rebuild that's currently ongoing. Page thirty of the report.
Ms. Penaroff, did you have your hand up?
Just for a second, I think it's either my audio or yours was glitching a little bit. So, but I think I, I think I heard you okay.
Perfect.
And, and just since I, I have my microphone off, just, just to be clear. So that increase then is, is in perpetuity after that point.
So the city can expect to receive, you know, unless a recession happens, but moving forward at least one point four million from the Urban Renewal after the thirty years. For those thirty years, the city will receive the hundred and sixty-nine thousand.
And, and you said a good average for us to think about was how, how much per year? In the beginning, it's like a couple hundred thousand?
Yeah, so I'll go ahead and show you a different table. Getting you all dizzy. So in this accompanying report.
It's your, it's your audio, Jordan.
Is my audio? Okay, let me do a quick replug. One second. Any better for you all?
Much better.
Okay, good. It's past both my bedtime and my microphone's bedtime. So I'm gonna do a video off because the only awkward thing is, is now you'll be staring at my chin. But I'm not the friend in the back, I can send it to you all, but I will go back to my slideshow. Actually, I'll show for you. You all can still see my screen.
I will say, Jordan, that you're having, you're having sound issues again. But when you talk a little bit lower, it doesn't seem to happen as much, just FYI.
Perfect. Do you mean lower in terms of my, where I'm physically located or a lower deep voice?
Yeah, lower, lower and slower comes through.
Lower and slower. Okay. I'm working on my radio voice right now.
You're gonna get hired.
Met radio and, and I apologize. I have so many windows open, you all. What I'm pulling up is a fact sheet that was put together by the consultant that shows the yearly impact on the city of Talent. There we go. All right, so what you're seeing here, and I can zoom in, is this is the impact, the city of Talent, the property tax we're receiving with the whole city and how much property tax is going to URA. So I want you to note that it ranges, sorry, I want to speak lower, ranges from a hundred and seventy-five thousand first year to one point two million in the last year. In the presentation I gave you all tonight, I had converted these nominal dollars into real dollars. And I can go ahead and pull that up. And what that real dollars, looking at the real dollars, it averages out to about three hundred thousand per year in foregone taxes. But here it is adjusted into real dollars. It ranges from that one hundred sixty-three to the four hundred and sixty-one thousand. It ranges from that one hundred sixty-three to the four hundred and sixty-one thousand.
Ms. Penamoroff?
Yeah, I, I was also wondering, um, if this is really good analysis and I, and I so appreciate you doing the, um, the real dollars versus nominal dollars analysis. Um, I, I, I know that some of our, our, um, pressure on staff is, is due to vacancies. Um, I appreciate the idea that those, uh, that money could translate into somebody's salary and benefits. Um, but I'm, I'm remembering how in, in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, um, we, you know, monies from the general funds would go to other things. Um, and I'm wondering if there was an analysis done of, like historically, to get a sense of how much the general fund was transferred to other funds such as, uh, capital projects, is that what you're showing?
Yes, so council.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Not beautiful, but it's together, it's the amount of money that we've transferred away from the general fund to other funds.
Okay, so those are, you know, way less than a hundred thousand dollars, what we're looking at.
Correct.
Okay.
Other questions?
I, I do have one more, sorry. Um, and did we ever?
Who the mathematician in the group is?
Just enough to confuse myself, right? Um, so I'm wondering what, what is the percentage, uh, property taxes of the, um, now I know if I say the budget, that'll be a, uh, probably an arbitrarily small number. Um, what percentage, uh, of the revenues, um, to the general fund are property taxes? Did you tell us that number? I'm just trying to build the, the context in terms of the entire budget. And I guess probably what I should have asked for in addition to what gets transferred out is what typically gets transferred in. Um, but yeah, any, any of those numbers that you think would be helpful, just to build a little bit of context?
Yes, of course, and I will share that information right now. Um, and also if my volume's going out, let me know and I'll call in, because this is an important conversation.
You're sounding really good right now.
I'm good. I'm gonna go sing some Macy Gray after this. So property tax typically makes up forty to fifty percent of our general fund revenue. Um, and that's very typical for a town of our size. The last two years have been wildly different because of the amount of grant funding that has come in. Um, but in typical years, that's forty to fifty percent. And I want to show you where the expenses go, you know, seventy-five percent of our expenditures in general fund go to salaries. And so that's really why I'm talking in terms of, of employees' numbers, to help interpret numbers. And I want to highly recommend going back to the June seventeenth joint study session that you all had as both the council and the board. There I did do a much more in-depth overview of our general fund revenue sources and our expenditures, and really how urban renewal will impact it. And that actually speaks to something that one of our public commenters said, of how will, how will capital projects help offset budget money? And as I make very clear in that presentation, capital projects are not funded through our general fund. They are funded through our, our water utility fund, through our SDC fund, our street fund and our park fund. Um, but I do, happy to resend that link if that would be helpful for anyone to look at the budget details.
You know, on that point, I, I, I think I just want to make a comment, because I think we'll talk, I, I, I heard that, I think I heard that same, um, testimony or, you know, um, feedback from, uh, one of the speakers tonight about, um, the capital improvement projects um, and, and capital improvement projects, uh, that are needed elsewhere in the community. And, and the one thing that, um, also I think needs to be mentioned, and maybe even Derek mentioned this, is that, um, is that if we are able to, you know, uh, find a solution, and now we have more options to choose from, um, if we're able to find a solution, uh, that works, um, to have, um, an urban renewal agency and also maintain services, um, even though those funds would be concentrated for capital improvement within the, um, urban renewal district, that does allow us to concentrate other urban, I mean, other capital improvement, um, funds outside of the urban renewal. So, um, I, I do want to acknowledge that there is, you know, there is some compression in projects from, from one area to another when you have urban renewal. I've seen that work and, um, uh, so it does, it, it also allows us to address capital improvement projects, um, in areas outside of the urban renewal, with monies that we would normally use for, um, all of the city's capital improvement projects. I hope I made that clear. Um, so, um, Ca- uh, Council Penamoroff?
Yeah, the, the last thing, um, I was wondering about, and I, I'm pretty sure you did cover this, Jordan, i- and that is to provide context. Um, is that, uh, if, um, some of the folks that were paying our staff, um, are performing, uh, tasks uh, on behalf of urban renewal, um, or in, in partnership, uh, with urban renewal, that, um, urban renewal can help, um, pay, uh, those employees. Is, is that right?
Urban renewal can only cover the administration costs that staff spend administering Tura. And so I want to emphasize that that's, you know, work in addition to their already, the workload they already have from the city front. It can't be used to offset any of the city work that they're already doing.
And that's what I remembered. Thank you.
But it, it also is not likely they're doing that city work within the urban renewal district. So it does offset a little bit, um, though I wouldn't say it's, I, I mean, I, I wouldn't even venture to guess that it's a like hour-for-hour type offset at all, um, but I think it does, you know, offset some of, some of the work that is, would be done in that district.
Yeah, and I can share that, you know, the projections of the city administration now that we've taken over, you know, is it going to be about thirty thousand dollars per year?
All right, um, I do see Courtney Bucalo's hand still up, and I just want to say, Courtney, I'm not able to take, uh, your comments anymore tonight, but I could take them, uh, at the, our next meeting on the seventeenth. Um, all right, are there any other comments or questions? Well, I just want to say that, um, I really appreciate this presentation. It was easy to understand, um, it was thorough, it provided us with additional options. Um, you know, we, uh, one of the things that we've talked about all along, um, as we, as we brought this plan to the table is, um, that, um, that plan plus any other options. We want all of the options on the table for the council to consider, uh, after listening to the other jurisdictions, after including the city, obviously, and, um, uh, this certainly gets us further, uh, to that end. Uh, by my count, it looks like we have a, uh, anywhere from three to five potential options to, to work with. Um, and then any, any, any potential modifications that, uh, could be made to any one of those. So this is optimal, this is where we want to be, um, and, uh, we really appreciate, uh, the good work you've done to that end. Um, okay, so if there's, uh, no other comments or questions, uh, we're, we're at the nine twelve mark. And I'd like to go ahead and move this uh, further on the agenda. Oh, I did have one question, I'm sorry, Jordan. Um, and, and it's, it, it was from what Derek, uh, said. Um, and I did appreciate his point that we talked about, uh, with the staff earlier, um, district boundaries, uh, added, adding to the district bound- boundary in some of the areas that I know, um, we do have some capital improvement projects that we, that at some point in time, we need to address one way or the other. And, um, but it, what it made me think about is, um, you know, when you look at the different options and sort of that first, um, that first tax increment and how to prioritize that, has staff, um, considered, has staff looked at the plan, looked at the, the buckets of work that, um, that, uh, we've, um, assembled and thought about how to reprioritize our work based on, you know, those other s- potential options. Um, especially given the fact that they have such different, uh, dollar amounts. Have you given that any thought?
Um, I'm going to repeat that back to you, just to make sure I understand.
Okay.
Mia, are you talking about between the options of, of delaying a year or not delaying a year? Or just in terms of what projects get off the ground?
Well, so I think that if, if the council adopted something other than the plan as it's proposed, which, you know, that is, that, uh, we have opportunities at this point to, to look at lots of different options. Those come with different, um, different initial, um, you, you know, upfront revenues, right? I think I saw three point nine, no, two point nine or five point nine, and then one point something. And, um, so those would impact the priorities of work. Um, and I agree with, um, with Derek's comments that when you think about the impacts and the costs and all of those things, you also have to think about the benefits and how do you, how do you prioritize those, those projects and benefits to the city, uh, in our recovery? And so, um, if you haven't thought about it, and I can't imagine, uh, that you haven't, I think, I just think that you think about things, um, very, very thoughtfully. And, um, just how that, you know, how a change in, uh, the plan to a different freeze date would impact our priorities? And if you haven't thought about that, I would hope that we would talk about that in our next discussion. Does that make sense?
Yes, and I, and we have thought about it, and I would love to share those thoughts. Um, you know, from my perspective, as the current executive director of Tura as well, it would be very difficult for us to spend five point nine million dollars in that first one to five years. Um, it just takes so much staff capacity to, to build up and to identify the projects and get the details. Um, so regardless of if I have five point nine million in the bank account or two point nine million in bank account, I think we can still accomplish the same level, you know, what my priority would be. Um, would be leveraging funds, knowing that that HUD funding is coming down the pipeline. So can we use that either two point nine million or that five point nine million to get some designs that we have shovel-ready projects that we can instantly go forward in their specific focus areas, which are, um, housing, getting affordable housing, and which are economic recovery? Um, so that's, you know, the first focus area, recognizing that that is the core central goal of this plan. The second thing where the city has not been able to identify funding despite applying for numerous grants is in, um, the hazard mitigation work. And so that is the work of actually making Wagner Creek, uh, an accessible park that is maintained where the hazardous fuels stay low and it comes more of a, a nature gem for our city. So I would like to expend funds quickly in that category. Um, so really, I would initially want to use those funds to set the groundwork and start those, those necessary projects right away. Um, and I think two point nine million can more than cover that for the first one to three years. And by then, the two different scenarios have the same spending potential in terms of the future bonds and when they come, come up.
Can I make a comment on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, um, as somebody who was on the ad hoc committee that helped design how, uh, those funds, uh, coming down from HUD uh, would be, you know, how those programs would be designed, and really just echoing the voice of this council who, um, who really, uh, gave some thoughtful input about how that, those funds would be spent, to hear you, um, to hear you talk about dovetailing and, and leveraging funds, um, knowing, knowing what the constraints are of those funds and what the, what the a- available uses are, um, I couldn't agree more. I mean, no matter what the choice is, I couldn't agree more. And I'm going to think that is the immediate opportunity. I don't think it's a long-term solution by any means. I mean, I, 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 I appreciate what, um, um, I'm sorry, her name escapes me. She's running a long-term recovery group. Somebody help me.
Karen, Karen Wheeler.
Karen, yeah, I appreciate what she said, um, s- so much when, uh, she presented to us at, at our last meeting. And when she said, um, even if we got all hundred and forty twenty, four hundred and twenty-two million dollars in our area, it wouldn't be enough. I agree with that. Um, but I do see, and I do think it's, you know, it is a specific fix that'll last for a certain period of time. But, um, the idea of utilizing the funds in a way that uh, grow, you know, just grow all of the funds overall, um, is, is really great thinking. And, um, and that's, you know, really appreciate those comments. And I'm glad I asked. I'm really glad I asked.
Um, the other thing, you know, I will say that during the development of the plan, we staff did attend that one meeting, but we didn't feel quite able or prepared to give the deep input. I know staff would love the chance to identify projects that we can see really benefiting the rebuild specifically, um, and potential properties that could really benefit. You know, one thing we're seeing go in with this increased density is they're going into neighborhoods without sidewalks. And so if we are building homes that are particularly great for people to age in place, let's start putting the infrastructure in place to support them as well.
Are we missing the opportunity in the development to have sidewalks installed? Because that's typical with, with, um, uh, the, building a house is, is, uh, building the sidewalk that's associated with it, or in it, or in a development, the developer builds the, the sidewalks. Is that?
So we're, we're collecting STCs, um, urban, that is one of the benefits of urban renewal is we'll be able to do projects much faster. Because we're doing the SDC waiver on a lot of this rebuild, um, we are not collecting it at a fast enough or high enough level to get that infrastructure in, in a short-term height horizon.
The ST, the SDC waiver, by that you mean the one, um, where if they build uh, like-for-like, um, there's, uh, the like part of the STCs that, that was, I mean, the value of the STCs of what was already there is waived. That's the waiver you're talking about? Okay. Uh, Council Byers?
Um, yeah, thank you. I, I know this is asking for additional documentation of sorts from you, Jordan, but I would be so curious to see at least a short list of these, um, kind of force multiplier moments of funding between the city and Tura, just to have a better understanding of what opportunities you're identifying now that you are wearing both hats and have a much more detailed knowledge of what's happening on both sides. I think that would be a, a really great tool for us to have.
Thank you, Councilor.
All right, well, what a great way to wrap up a really successful meeting in my mind. Again, I want to thank you for, uh, providing us with such a great analysis. It's the, you know, it's the type of, um, response we hope to get from the other jurisdictions and, um, uh, and, and we look forward to continuing this work, so, um, if there is no other comments, I'll get back to the agenda and see where we're at. Okay, uh, so the next item on the agenda is committee and commission reports. And, um, does anybody, I, I, I would just ask if anybody feels compelled to give a committee and commission report, um, to go ahead and, and do that, uh, Council Byers?
Just a short one, um, Parks and Rec, a lot of, a lot of great movement is happening there towards goals that have been set. Um, I think a, an interesting point to bring up, if the city so chooses to pursue this, we had the, that fantastic world's tiniest park, quote unquote, installed in our commons space, and I say quote unquote only because it is up to the city to apply for the Guinness Book of World Record, record. Um, the Parks Commission cannot do that, so I just want to put that on, um, our radar to see if we want to officially claim that crown.
Anybody else? All right, so we'll just go ahead and move on to the next item, which is, uh, other business for future agenda items. Anybody? Um, I do, uh, yeah, I do want a review of the goals, um, soon. Uh, I think, um, we're actually, uh, may, did we do a mid-year review? Let's say we, so we set the goals late, didn't we?
We set the goals right before budgeting in May.
Yeah, so we get them, we sometimes get them a little bit earlier than that and this would make it around the mid-year. So, you know, I would say in the next, um, cycle or two, um, it is helpful when we're doing reviews, um, performance reviews. And, and I do want to, uh, meet with you and, uh, Eleanor about the performance review. We, uh, we have a practice that we've done in the past and, um, and we've worked with RV cog on it in the past. So I'd like, I'd like to chat with you about that and maybe if you'll just hold on forwarding, um, forwarding the survey for now. And, um, certainly open to a discussion about, uh, about how to, to do your performance review for sure, uh, but let's, uh, maybe sit down and discuss it. And that has been, uh, that, that role's been assigned to the mayor and the council president. So we'll, uh, you, you name the time. Um, and I, I'm so sorry. I actually have it, have it on my radar. I just, for some reason, thought it was closer to the end of the month. So my, my apologies for, for that. Um, so, um, then, uh, the next item on the agenda, if there's no other future, is written communications. There are written communications on this record from, uh, uh, emails regarding proposed urban renewal district as well as an email regarding purchase of the former fabricated glass property. So, um, you get a chance, if you haven't already caught up on all of the written comments, I do want to take this moment, um, to, um, ask about, um, just kind of maybe revisiting the, uh, written communication rules according to our council rules about what gets attached and what doesn't get attached. And, and maybe I think we should just revisit that. Um, because it just doesn't seem like it's, uh, the way it's written really favors, um, favors the voice being, uh, you know, heard. Um, I reviewed it today because I had, um, somebody communicate with me about concerns about, um, people from social media battles that are going on. Um, you know, with their name attached to it, going on to the packet and finding people's emails um, to, to really, in one case, uh, somebody described it as being harassed. Um, and, and they had, uh, differing views on items on our agenda and, and, um, and some characters off of social media. Uh, we're really just, um, leaning people's addresses and, and then harassing them on their emails. So on the one hand, we want to have, um, we want to have, um, you know, everybody's, uh, everybody's written communications, um, but just really maybe revisiting it to make sure that we, we have safeguards in place and that, um, the one thing that I think I take exception to is we've got it written in such a way where only if they ask to be on the record, are they on the record. And, um, I, um, I don't think that that people can keep up with that. I don't think people know that when they're writing the letter and I don't think it's fair to expect them to know that. At the same time, one of the complaints was I had no idea that this was going to be put on the record. And I'm concerned, you know, that, um, so what, what, you know, what thoughtful mechanisms could we put in place where, where we could kind of serve both of those concerns? And, um, and I think they're both valid concerns. Um, so I would like to revisit that rule and maybe clean it up a little bit. And I read it, like I said, I reviewed it today and I just thought, kind of, this is kind of, I don't know what we were thinking. Um, so I'll go to Counsel Penamrath and then Jordan. Three minutes, by the way.
Oh, sorry. I was just going to say, um, there's probably best practices around this. If the new website has some sort of a form, people can check whether they want it to appear in the packet, something like that. I, I, go ahead, Jordan. You know what's going on.
By the way, it's 10 minutes. I'm not, look, I'm not looking at the right. Yeah.
Right. No, I agree. Let's, let's readdress and let's find better mechanisms in the future. Given that we're receiving so many comments right now, I just want to be, to share openly with all of you of what the current process is and what the protection is so that we can help share that with the community so they know how they're engaging as well. So, you know, historically, when people would send an email, we would respond back and say, would you like this to be part of the written communications? They'd say, yes, we would include it in the agenda packet. Um, we are getting to a point where we are receiving so many communications per day that we can't keep up with, um, maintaining that response. And so now when we are getting a communication, we are adding it to the agenda packet. Also because, um, we are getting so many public records requests for all emails submitted by community members, um, so it's easier for us just to point to agenda packets for them, for those folks who are making those requests. So we will, moving forward, we have gone back and redacted all emails from previous packets. Um, we are redacting emails to include in the packets. However, emails are not protected in public records requests. If a record request gets made, an email could be accessible by somebody.
Right. And I think we know that. I just think that, um, I, I mean, I think, I think logically we know, we know that just based on the training we've gotten, but, um, but I don't think the public knows that. And that's, that's the issue I want to, I want to help, um, just clarify for everybody. You know, and I like the idea of having a portable, people come and it, and it makes it clear if, you know, where do you want this to go? And, um, how do you want it to be dealt with?
Agreed.
So, uh, that's, uh, that's it for me on that item. And then so the next thing we have is adjournment. Right? Okay, let's adjourn at, okay, my sixth at 9:22. Thanks, everybody. Uh, great work tonight.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Jordan.